Yeah, limiting it, it's temp- it could be temporary.
Yep.
Because if we, the other thing is if there is equipment that's available, it might not be sanctioned equipment, but we would only allow sanctioned equipment if there was a tournament. But we, if there are quiet balls and they're available, then we should say you must.
Right.
I'd like to point out that there are non-air tennis balls. There are tennis balls that are practice balls that have action, but they're not acceptable in, other than for practice. And if that type of equipment is present available, such as the balls and maybe such as certain paddles, and the sport is evolving towards more of that equipment, I think, I personally think that's the train we should start chasing because of the aesthetics. We don't want, this is a great solution from a technical standpoint. I absolutely agree with you, Tom. You know, but I'm not sure that it's, we're talking about putting in a beautiful playground. We're talking about putting, and I'm not sure aesthetically, I don't know. This might not look as ugly as I think it might, but I have a concern with it aesthetically.
Well, I think too, along your, along your point, Kim, is that it's not ideal, but even with the construction that's going to be right in that area, this might have a positive effect on that as well. I mean, the restrooms are going in right, basically right behind the pickleball court.
I mean, that park is under construction for the next three years.
Yes, thank you.
I just did a search on the internet, and I don't know anything about pickleball products. I don't play pickleball, but I see this pickleball pad that could go on a, you know, it's like, okay, is that an option? That if you want to play pickleball in Gilchrist Park, this is what you must do. And it says, you know, that it turns any paddle into a quiet paddle. I mean, I don't know if that's a reasonable option. You know, there are claims made here that it says it extends the life of the paddle, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I'm sure that somebody who's a real pickleball player is going to say, oh, we don't want to do that because it's performance affecting. But we're talking about noise.
Kim?
Can, can we limit the time, the eight to eight?
Is eight to eight? Is everybody okay with eight to eight?
I could even be more aggressive, but eight to eight's fine.
And if you and Howard maybe can pursue the quieter balls and the paddles and see if that helps the problem?
I mean, we could, we could call in, there's two shops, Wrigley's and the tennis-
Grand Slam?
Grand Slam. We could call them in. I'm sure they'll sit down with us. I mean, they're in the business of selling this stuff. It would behoove them to stock what we have.
Believe me, we'll know if it works or not because we can hear it.
If we go, if we go down the path of limiting the types of equipment that can be used, and what I'm about to say could be taken positively or negatively, it could reduce the amount of activity on the pickleball court without eliminating the activity of the pickleball court at the same time. Because I can also see in my mind, that click may be part of the excitement of the game for some people. The noise may actually be on, you wouldn't go to, you wouldn't go to an automobile race with mufflers on, you know? That's not part of the excitement.
Okay, okay.
Keep in mind that it's not just the equipment that's generating the noise, it's the noise of 32 participants on the court, you know?
Plus the ones waiting.
Plus the ones waiting and cheering and something like that. So I, I don't think we can rule out the acoustic fence as much as it's not appealing, but I don't think that we can rule that out.
Well, let's get some real-
We're going to come, we're going to cost it out.
I do want to say, I mean, those of us who live there, we like noise. We like the sound of the kids playing, and you know, I live across from the basketball. The no, I don't think the noise of people having fun and enjoying themselves is irritating. It's just that thunk, 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 thunk of 32 balls. It's, it's a loud noise. Because when the music plays, we all enjoy the music. I mean, we, we do live downtown on a park for a reason. We like activity. We like watching people. We like having, you know, people having fun. It's just that particular noise that is very, you know, unsettling. Now, it's not at my house, but I went and parked in front of their house before I came here. Crazy.
Okay, so we're going to do some more research. We're going to look at the acoustic fence.
We'll start with eight to eight. We'll get the word out.
Yep.
Set the timers for 8:00 AM.
Set the timers, lights go on.
8:00 PM.
The working, now we're going to hear from the working people. Pickleballers know how to email. I'm surprised they don't have carpal tunnel from all those emails.
Something else I'd like to throw out, almost all of the emails, not almost all of them, but all of them have talked about how this sport is expanding. We all, we all see how it's, it's expanding. I've observed that the rooftop of the Harold Center Court Garage is largely empty of cars except for when, when there are events in town. I'm wondering if that area might not be, might, could not serve as two purposes, as a parking surface as needed for events, and when it's not needed for events, it could serve as a rooftop pickleball court. They're, they're, it's not, wouldn't be the first in the country.
Yeah, we can. It's just we have to set it up and then bring the fences down.
Well, yeah, well, yes, you would have to do that. These, these would be, could be temporary fences that are put into stanchions that are removable, except for what you might have-
Acoustic fences?
No, you wouldn't, you don't need acoustic fences.
It's going to echo off of there.
I think this is a great idea box solution, or at least consideration. I shouldn't say solution. I think this is a multi, I think it's worth investigating. I think it's-
What about the balls flying over?
Well, no.
That's why you would have these, these-
You, you could, you could put some fencing up at the parapet, you know, it's not a big deal.
They do it at golf courses along 75 all the time.
And when we have an event and we need a parking, we could just re-stripe using some, using tape to re-stripe, so it's not like a huge expense. I think it's something we could look into. It could accommodate the expansion of the, of the sport. They could play at nighttime under the lights finished, go downstairs and circulate around town, and there's plenty of parking. There's been a parking garage, there's plenty of parking, that's not an issue.
Let's not forget that we limited parking, and there's going to be a lot more people parking in that parking garage.
But when parking, when parking is needed, it would have to revert to accommodate all the events and so on.
I think there was a little irreverence there. I could see it in the grin.
There, I just, another, I see online that there are other balls already out there. And so, given what you might, we might find out when we talk to the local stores, merchants, we may want to say, if you're going to play between these hours, this is what you have to do. And so that at least it gives additional hours of quiet.
And let's remember, there are a lot more pickleball places in town. So it's like, if you want to play here, here are the rules for this area. And, and there's a lot of other places to go at night, at, you know.
They love our court.
I know. And we love having them there.
I would suggest that we talk to some of the pickleball organizations about Tom's idea, because you have that right downtown. The idea of going and having a great time and then going to Celtic Ray or Jacks for after, after-game drink, to me is appealing personally.
Tom, you're, you're having that meeting.
Tom, you're the man right now.
Tom, you're having that meeting.
But it would bring, it would force people to come downtown and where the businesses are, and a lot of them would say, okay, hey, let's go have a drink, or let's go have a sandwich, or whatever.
It spreads the sport out as well.
Exactly, exactly.
So are we saying as an extra spot, as opposed to eliminating Gilchrist?
Yes.
Yeah.
It might take some of the pressure off of Gilchrist, too.
It could, it could.
I mean, it, yeah, other than large events, the top floor is empty.
And we only have one or two a year that are ongoing. I mean, we, we could, we could restrict the event thing, except for the ones that are already in place. We wouldn't want to take the July 4th away from, no. But I'm just saying, we could stop, we don't have to use that for events.
Oh, we could.
Okay.
We have options.
Let's move on. Take talk. Okay, drainage level service update, this is another.
Good morning. Mark Garing, Public Works. I've been here a few times talking about drainage. I've also been out talking to different community groups. We went to five different groups-
Nice.
-to broach the idea of eliminating the swale driveways for new constructions and driveway rebuilds. We spoke to Burnt Store, Burnt Store Meadows, Punta Gorda Isles, the Planning Commission, and the Land Development Regulations Committees. None of those groups had any problem whatsoever with eliminating swale driveways, future construction. I do want to point out that just recently with the water line breaks, we did have a water line break, Public Works employees' house, and they are replacing their driveway with swale drive. They're paying the additional dollars to go with a swale drive. If we did something like this, and there was a water, a break, it could potentially cost the city a little additional money, too. If we replace a driveway, we would need to replace it following code.
Question, what kind of permitting is required if a homeowner wants to replace the driveway and put in a-
Right-of-way permit.
Is that, is there a fee attached to that?
Yes.
There is? Okay.
Is that all?
That's all I have.
You didn't have the silver bullet? I thought you were going to come and solve all of our drainage problems today, Mark.
Well, we do have a, we do have a way to solve it off.
Okay.
And it was brought up five, six years ago, and it went over like a lead balloon. So I'm going to bring it up again.
Okay.
If you want to solve all the drainage issues in the city, at least do more swales per year than what we're currently doing, because our current level of service will never catch up. We will never catch up.
We got a 34-year, 36, 36-year waiting list.
And if you do not, if you do not want to put the onus on the property owner, or the property owners in a particular area, to solve their own issue by de-thatching, if you do not want to do that, then what many communities have done throughout Florida, I'll just deal with Florida, because there, other communities around the country have done the same thing, but let's just talk about Florida. Have established a stormwater utility district, and they established a stormwater utility fee. They put methodology together on how to assess developed properties and undeveloped properties. We established through the assessment methodology and the amount of work that has to get done, a enterprise fund budget. We assess all the property owners a fee, and it'll show up on your property tax bill, and all the dollars raised goes towards drainage and nothing else. It goes towards stormwater and nothing else. That would mean we could set whatever budget we want, and we would collect the appropriate fees for that, assess the property owners a fee to match to that budget, like we do with lot mowing, we do with canal-
Maintenance.
Maintenance. We do not do that with stormwater. All stormwater is handled out of the general fund. So if we wanted to separate it out, it would be a separate enterprise fund. We don't have to do it with city employees. We could hire a firm, and that's all they do, is drainage work. That's a way to solve it.
What if we, what if we, we didn't go that far, but what if when we start our budget discussions, you know how we have our road millage? What if we just start saying, okay, this, whatever? We do that for road repaving, and we've even increased what we've put in that pot, is saying, this part of this millage rate is for this stormwater, stormwater issues that we have, because we definitely have the issues.
Yeah, you could do that.
Instead of doing the additional fee, we could just include it as a portion of the millage. And if that meant this year, we have to include it to get it in there and keep it going, then that's what we look at the citizens, and we say, this portion, this portion is for roads, this portion is for stormwater utility, this portion is for public safety. I mean, we've kind of tried to keep the millage rate, and that's it, except for canal maintenance and those things. So I would rather us go in that direction than doing a whole stormwater utility fee. Tom?
Except for pickleball, I haven't got more emails about the swales and standing water. So I think we, we really need to add resources to solve the problem. We can't keep doing the same thing and expect different results. So I'm not so sure, I, I'm inclined to go with a separate assessment for, or support a separate assessment, because it's part of a community effort. The community can help itself in this area. They can help itself by keeping the, the thatch low in the areas. The community can, I don't know if the culverts would, would help that much, they may, but it's an opportunity for the community to kind of help itself, and then the fee would be as a result of how much work was left after the community and city were not able to deal with the problem. So I'd like to see the separate standalone fee.
I have a couple of questions for Mark, because about, do the culverts help the drainage? If the box culverts versus a swale driveway, do they-
I would say they hide the problem.
They hide the problem.
The general problem, the water will still be there. The water is going to sit at an elevation, wherever it sits. By building the box culvert, we're up above that water. People can walk out to their mailbox, walk the dog, whatever it is they do. They're not interfered by it. Their grass, their lawn care person still has the problem that he has.
Of the thatch.
Might have to get the weed whip out rather than mowing through it, those kinds of things. It hides the problem. It makes it less, as you talk about setting a fee, all things, all kinds of things are going through my mind. What kind of fee would we set? If, if our goal was to regrade everybody's swale every five years, we're talking about probably as much or more than we're paying for our canals. It could be a very large fee. We have to figure out what, what would be appropriate. I have no idea what, if we wanted to keep the entire community dry, that's, that's just way up there.
Where I was coming from, is I live on Maria Court, which is the second oldest block in Punta Gorda Isles. And my neighbor, and the drain that goes out to the canal is right between my, my house and my neighbor on our side of the street. And we both have box culverts, and we drain pretty darn well. And I haven't de-thatched my lawn for, I know since 2006 when it was put in. That doesn't mean I shouldn't and I won't. I mean, I'm, I'll look into it, but, but the point is, I just didn't see it. So I was just, the reason I was saying that is if box culverts have a positive effect, but you're kind of answering my question, it's hiding, maybe we don't, we want to encourage people to put that in and charge a lower fee if they do, if they do things to improve their property, to improve the situation, maybe we should give them some relief in that effort somehow. I don't know.
That's a lot of bookkeeping, though. Nancy?
I'm all for immediately ceasing permitting swale driveways.
That would be, too.
And so that, to answer that question, but as far as the swales, I'd love to be able to have, think that we could have some kind of an educational program that would educate people on what the turf is, the turf is causing the problem. But I know that that's not possible, and with our turnover we have, it's going to be really difficult to educate people on, especially difficult when the people that are experiencing the problem aren't, aren't causing the problem. So somebody's going to have to go, it, we'll have a whole new team of code compliance people going out and measuring thatch, and then talking to people and saying, your thatch, your lawn has got too much thatch. So I think the only way we can do this is to do some kind of a, an assessment-
Program.
Program.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe we need to send Mark back and get creative with some, expanding our current program.
But I'm, I'm thinking, I like the idea of a separate assessment, only because it makes it very transparent what it's for. It's not, we're not hiding it inside of our own millage rate.
I don't think we hide anything in our millage.
Well, we don't. We are, we are very transparent, but I think it puts it out there even more. So.
Kim?
So the problem is still the turf is causing the problem.
Major part of the problem, yes.
Major part of the problem. And the other major part of the problem?
Just general maintenance.
Okay.
The pipes need to be cleaned, just set them in in the swales.
Which is the city, which is, is the responsibility of the city. I get, I get that. So what about, I mean, I like the definitely getting rid of the swale, but it really is just hiding the problem.
Right.
If we get rid, if we either, if you're going to have that kind of grass, instead of having the program where the city is actually, the taxpayers, all the taxpayers are paying to go out and tear it all up and fix it as a problem you're trying to keep up, you go out, you measure the thatch on, and so you say, you have a problem. And then they have to de-thatch their lawn, and it just, the thatch has to be a certain, an ordinance that the thatch has to be a certain, if you want to use that type of turf. Otherwise, use something else that doesn't do that. Then you put the onus on the homeowner. I mean, if something happens at your home, you're responsible. I get the fact that the-
It's our right of way, though.
The water, well, it's not always our right of way, though. It's, sometimes it's, it's the, well, then, well, then we can just take up the grass and put down behia sod.
Well, we, we, we've tried to match what they have.
I know, but that's causing a problem. And think of the money that's being spent. If you think, you know, what, how much money is being spent right now doing what you're doing? It's got to be an exorbitant amount of money.
It's a very, it's a perfect environment for thatch to develop. It's a nutrient-rich environment, and it's moist.
Sure.
And, and that's what the University of Florida professor told us, and that it's, the thatch is an impermeable layer, both horizontally and vertically, so it's-
Yeah.
I mean, we're creating a problem by putting the same turf back.
But Mark, if we just put new sod in the swale, that doesn't solve the problem. We have to grade.
Right.
Well, first of all, we've determined that if the thatch is built up to a point where it's blocking drainage, de-thatching is no longer an option.
Right. It's already too-
Too late.
Too thick.
We need to scrape all of that sod and thatch up, six, eight, 12 inches, whatever it might be, level the dirt out to the proper elevation, and put new sod down at the proper elevation. And that currently, we're averaging about $1,500 per lot to do that, and each drainage complaint that we address is averaging four lots needing to be regraded.
How many lots a year?
50 problem areas a year. Some of those require regrading, some of them are pipes that got crushed or something like that. Lots per year, well, we're talking $80,000 a year total that we're spending now for this.
But we were not touching the issues, yeah.
Now, didn't, didn't you estimate, I think before, it was like a two, two and a half million dollar project?
You can throw all kinds of numbers at, yeah, we're talking 200 miles at $1,500 per lot.
But not all lots need it. I mean, I've, in the entire time I've lived at my house, we haven't needed it.
If we change the hour, the 72-hour threshold to something different, that obviously is going to, you know, not go to, like what you said, keep the city dry all the time, but a different timeframe than what we've been using now. I mean, that's going to expand the issues that we have, but I mean, somehow we've got to come up with a program to start addressing it. I don't know what the magic number is.
If I could remind you of some numbers that we presented last time. From our videos, we had 1,700 who looked like they really have a drainage problem of some sort that they're not going to be happy with. Their driveway is stained, they didn't get to mow their lawn properly, something like that. 1,700 of those. On the third day when we did the video, we had 176 who still had water. That's 176 who didn't meet our criteria for level of service. Of those, we're, we're shooting for 70 this year. 70, 76 of them is what we pulled out to try to solve. So we're going to get about a third of them is what our hope is, and then next year, we repeat the process and, and continue going. So we'd have to triple our effort right now just to get it where we're actually performing at our level of service, and then see where it goes from there.
Well, maybe during, when's our next budget discussion?
Tomorrow night.
No, not the community, the council.
Oh, April, April.
So maybe in April, we need to look at either a portion of the millage going toward drainage for next year's budget, or the utility fee, stormwater utility fee, and try to get a handle on this.
I have a couple of questions. Mark, indulge me a full moment. What's involved in actually de-thatching the grass in the swale?
If you're catching it early on-
Yes.
They come through with a, a verta mower, vertical mower, and it's got tines on it, and it rips up all the, the dead stuff underneath, brings it to the top, they have to rake it, vacuum it away. It's, it's like aerating your lawn.
Two hundred bucks to do that a year?
Or less, yes.
Or less?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the swale area.
This is, this is my point. I'm getting back to something I think that, that Kim was trying to point out. It costs $1,500 to do, to redo a swale. Why shouldn't that be, okay, in my case, why shouldn't that be my responsibility?
If you choose that sod.
Well, that's what I-
Exactly, that's my point. I choose, I've chosen that sod. So why shouldn't that be my responsibility? I can spend 75 bucks a year and ask my lawn care person every 75, every year to de-thatch my swale for me, or I can choose not to. And if I choose not to, when it becomes a problem, I have to pay 1,500 bucks. I don't think that's unreasonable.
It may not be your problem. You, your lawn may be causing the neighbor-
I'm talking about whosoever problem is causing the-
Right.
I'm talking about whosoever caused, we, we set a code spec, as you pointed out, it's one inch of thatch, or five inches of thatch, or 20 feet of thatch, whatever that number's going to be. We set that as part of a code. Just, I mean, if, if somebody, if a house gets foreclosed and a property is abandoned and it doesn't get mowed, what do we do?
We go in there and do it.
We measure it, yeah.
Do we do it for free?
No.
No, what do we do?
We lean the property.
I rest my case. We could do the same thing.
Well, I'm-
We can.
We can.
It's going to be a cultural change, and that's, that's been the issue, is how our city has chosen to address this over time. I'm, I'm totally with you, Gary. I'm a master gardener.
Okay.
And so I understand this issue, but when residents, I agree with Tom, I, we get tons of emails about this. And, and how do you tell the neighbor, the person who's experiencing the water, that it's the, I know streets, I could, I could cite street names right now-
No, you, you-
-where there are multiple lots. In fact, some of the people that are complaining about it, their lawn is probably causing some of the problem.
Here's what I know. I had a house on my block that was foreclosed and it was abandoned. They didn't maintain it. I called the city. Guess what? They started mowing it.
Mm-hmm.
Until somebody started taking responsibility for that piece of property.
Mark, is there a way to go measure the thatch?
That's what I'm saying.
No, I understand.
Certainly. That's the first thing we do when we, when we're going to go to work in an area. We set our levels up, and we measure the flow of the drainage, where it needs, where it's coming from and where it needs to go, and we determine, okay, this area is three inches too high, that area is four inches too high, and that's the first thing we do.
We could, we could do it.
You know, it would be, for example, if you came out to me and you told me I really had six inches too much thatch, I would consider it a good service, just the way the fire department will replace a battery on it. I don't know if that's expensive to determine what that is, but you know, if there was a service that the city provided to let us know, if we chose that type of grass to help us be preemptive, that would be also advantageous. But I still want to say, I'm responsible for my piece of property. I've got my, my standard 80 by 120-foot lot. I've chosen that, that, and I feel personally that if I'm causing the problem, and if the, and if the person that's three lots down is causing the problem, and they're not meeting an appropriate city code, that's their problem. That shouldn't be my problem.
Well, which direction do you want to move in? Ordinance on thatch, or?
I'm, I'd like what I'm hearing from Gary.
I do, too.
I'm, I've said that for a long time, so I'm-
Okay.
I mean, we can-
Well, we'll take some flak about it, but that's why we're sitting here.
But that's going to ultimately save the customers, residents' money.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
In the long haul, it will be.
Yes.[1681.25]
There will be a cultural change, but if you get it set, you know.
And once you put the onus back on the taxpayer, the homeowner, whatever, that educational piece will be sought after. What can I do? What will make it better? Because now it's their responsibility. When they just have to call Mark and say, I've got standing water.
But they're not the ones that are calling.
No.
It's the people, it's the people in the cul-de-sacs.
Sure.
That are calling and saying, the water's not draining.
Right.
And it's people from there, all the way down to wherever that drain is.
Sure.
That are causing the problem. So, now, we are going to have to create, we're going to have to educate the homeowners and we're going to have to inform and let people know. And there's gonna be a transition period where there's gonna be some difficulty.
There's gonna be some people that are upset. But that person's got that cul-de-sac with the standing water. If Mark comes out there and determines that it's the third and the seventh house on the block up, upwind of him that have, that are creating the problem.
It's easier to measure a thatch than to replace the whole.
And we can say, this is about a two million dollar plus hit to the taxpayers if we have to start taking care of this ourselves.
It would make a great Facebook question of the week to ask, do you want the city to just do this and, and charge everybody more? Or do you think we should start to educate people and?
We're going farther than education if we put an ordinance in place.
Oh, yeah. You're absolutely right.
We have to develop an ordinance.
I like the ordinance, absolutely.
I think, I think what we do is, is if, if we find a property that is creating an issue, you give the homeowner a chance to, to correct it. And if not, the city will do it and bill that homeowner.
I have a couple of questions for Mark. Mark, you mentioned mowing versus taking the, the other machine that they use, the whipper, whipping thing and, and cut, and mowing, keeping the.
Verticutting.
Verticut. Verticut is better than, than mowing, I would think, the swale.
This is something you do once a year. Just come through and, and chop it out once a year to get down.
You could take a weed whacker and see, a lot of times, they can't get the lawnmower down into the swale. Is there, there's another way of cutting that grass in the swale to keep it low.
It's not the same, though, Tom. What, this is, this is getting, this is getting down into the root. It's getting down into the, the thatch layer. The thatch layer is underneath the grass. The grass is growing on top of, of the dead roots. Thatch is just dead roots.
Grass actually starts growing on itself instead of on the dirt.
Okay. And the other thing, oh, I wanted to ask, if the permitting is, did we discuss the permitting for creating a culvert or changing?
Yeah, let's, can we do that right now, or do we have to wait?
Well, we have it here in the ordinance. We're gonna put in for future construction, no swale driveways.
Well, what are, the existing ones, if somebody wants to convert, can we waive the fee for permitting?
I'm okay with that.
For now? I mean, we do have to do inspections. I guess that's what the fee is there for.
Yes. There's a couple inspections involved. One, to set the grade that the, the box culvert needs to be established at. Once, to check the form boards to make sure that, uh, they've gotten properly. And once, when they're done with the driveway, to see that they poured the concrete as they set their forms.
What, what is that fee currently?
It's handled entirely through the building.
Part of the building.
Yeah, and they're an enterprise fund, so, I mean.
They pay for themselves.
Yeah, they, they're self-generating to pay for their work. So, I don't know that that would, and I don't even know how many takers we would have temporarily.
Well, it doesn't matter if people are responsible for their own drainage problem anyway, so.
Well, we're gonna put an ordinance together.
Okay.
Good boy.
Okay. Educational, it's these educational ordinance.
We'll put a, we can put a Facebook question out there, but we're gonna put an ordinance.
Yeah, good.
Okay. Um, okay, now we're.
I never thought we'd have this, that conversation.
Now, we're going into new business, so, um, we're gonna have our citizens' comments section again. So, if you wanna make comment on the conversion of the overhead electric cable distributions in BSI, the discussion regarding limited house occupations for LBTs, or the palm tree removal, um, by FPL, that's it. That's the only things left on the agenda. If you'd like to speak on any of those three items, now would be the time. Come to the podium. You heard the rules before, I hope, and I will, I will be the timer after you state your name and address. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Bob Fritz, 571 Macedonia Drive. Uh, this was tried in two thousand and three. There was an estimate then, ballpark, eight thousand to ten thousand. It was defeated. They're trying to do it again. I agree with them. Let's look at it. But I'm concerned, the engineer just left. They say, uh, Ponte Gorda has allowed, will allow FPNL to go into the right-of-way of the road to lay the high-voltage wires, uh, transformers, and switchgear. Switchgear's another issue. But I'm concerned, all these wa, the water mains are in the right-of-way of the road. We've had all kinds of breaks there. I can see a really potential problem for life safety issue, a guy operating a backhoe when the line breaks, trying to get in there. Uh, I can see them not digging until the power is de-energized. So, then, not only do you have, not have water, you don't have power. Uh, easy solution is to tell FPNL, you locate your wi, your high-voltage wiring on the side of the street, in the right-of-way, opposite the water lines. I don't know if anybody's considered that. I don't know if anybody told FPNL that. But if we're gonna, the accuracy of this estimate that they wanna do is key. Because we're looking at an over a ten million dollar project here that Burnstour Isles residents have to pay eventually, if it goes through. So, you know, my concern is that. My other concern, and I don't know if they're resolved yet, is a switchgear that's the size of a car that the FPNL representative at the Burnstour Church said would go in the right-of-way of the road, and I said, on somebody's front lawn. Okay, that's not gonna work. And it makes no sense even to go through with the seventy-five dollars for everybody unless that issue's resolved somehow beforehand. Why spend money when you're gonna have a, a revolution if you put these on somebody's front lawn? Uh, the other thing is, they're talking about FPNL. I don't know about Comcast. Anybody who's dealt with Comcast knows there's gonna be a problem. And, uh, you know, I don't know, I don't know the timeline. I don't know if they got an estimate from, from Comcast to do the work. Information's really lacking here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'd like to speak on any of these three agenda items, please come to the podium. Nobody's moving, okay.
Okay.
Moving on to new business. BSI.
Rather than me discuss it, I'll let the folks from BSI.
I should've had them line up. Line up. Oh, now they gotta do the computer.
No, it's, it's, it's set up there, just.
We gotta be more efficient here.
There we go.
We're gonna pick up on Burnstour Isles.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Frank Petrosino. I reside at 5077 San Rocco Court, Ponte Gorda. Uh, today, I'm representing the Burnstour Isle Association as chairman of the Underground Wiring Conversion Committee. As you can see, uh, we have a purpose. And Burnstour Isle Homeowner Association is asking city council to assist in a straw ballot vote, requesting affected property owners to fund an FPL engineering study converting overhead utilities to underground wiring in BSI. But I wanna clarify a point here and lay a fact on the table. The Burnstour Isle Association does have a fiduciary responsibility to improve the, uh, community. And I'll read from the bylaws. BSIA was established in nineteen seventy-three. Under the laws of the state of Florida, the purpose of the association is stated in Article One, Section Three of the bylaws is as follows. Burnstour Isles has been formed to provide a means for residents and owners of property in Burnstour Isles to jointly promote the continual improvement of the neighborhood, to foster good fellowship, to protect the health, safety, and well-being of the residents and owners, to provide educational programs, and to cooperate with other civic groups, owner associations, and governmental agencies as they consider plans and programs for the area. Thusly, the association did hold a survey. And, uh, we had been receiving requests from the residents to investigate once again the feasibility of going underground. In November of two thousand and fourteen, at the general membership meeting in a survey of Burnstour Isle members, one of the questions asked was, do you favor pursuing underground utilities? Of the seventy-eight responding, sixty-four were in favor, eleven were against, and three not responding to that question. But it's important at this point to understand why that survey was even taken. The genesis of this newly-formed attempt to get a feasibility study began at the PGI Civic Center in the fall of two thousand and fourteen, when FPL had given a presentation to the PGI Association to determine if underground wiring would be feasible there. They had been given a ballpark figure and conversation ensued. But at that meeting were two of our presidents, the twenty-fourteen administration president and the incoming twenty-fifteen administration. And those gentlemen concluded, after hearing the, uh, conversation at that meeting, that we would be wise in listening to our, our member requests and pursuing this. To further that, in February of two thousand and fifteen, an email survey of residents were asked, are you interested in further pursuing underground wiring project for BSI? Of course, we had more respond because this was the email. Of the three hundred and sixty-one responding, two hundred and seventy-six voted yes, eighty-five voted no. Where do we stand now? Burnstour Isles now, there are approximately twelve thousand properties currently serviced by overhead wires. Additionally, larger concrete poles are scheduled to replace the wooden poles. This is FPL's hardening, uh, program that is going throughout the state. And should that continue as planned, we will be having more concrete and more wooden poles installed. One plus that makes this project very feasible is that we presently have underground wiring from street to home. Let me illustrate. You may remember when wires would run across and attach to your house and then drop down to the box. We don't have that, which makes this project feasible because we'll be eliminating all of that trenching from street to home. You'll notice on the map here in green, on this map of Burnstour Isles, you can see areas that are shaded green that have underground utilities. Please note the two residential streets that were developed with underground utilities. That's Madrid Court and Marcellus Court. Well, you can't see them very well up there. Uh, those streets actually received underground wiring through private funding of the concerned citizens who live there. They were forward-thinking individuals. But all of the perimeter of the enclave does have underground wiring, and that would consist of the multifamily homes consisting of the Mondavi Development, Viscaya, uh, the Villas Grande, uh, Burnstour Villas. And we have spoken to each of those presidents of those associations, and those presidents do agree that for the good of the community, this project should proceed. So, we've covered the, the bases there and everybody's on board from that area. At the two thousand and fourteen December BSIA board meeting, a subcommittee was formed of residents, volunteers, to study the feasibility of underground conversion in Burnstour Isles. This subcommittee began meeting immediately with, uh, FPL, the city of Ponte Gorda, Comcast, and Century Link. Now, this is very interesting, in that Century Link in Burnstour Isles is already underground, therefore saving that extra cost. They would be running parallel with us, uh, with conduit. We have a picture up here of some of the shoddy workmanship that exists throughout our area. Those are Comcast wires. Now, when we asked, uh, uh, property owners and residents to give us some input, this is some of the complaints that we had gotten. There's numerous of, uh, situations like this throughout the community. This, of course, would all disappear if Comcast were to, to go underground. We have continually presented information and our findings, not only at two BSI member meetings in two thousand and fifteen, but we've also had the information on the BSI webpage, uh, next door neighbor communication. We also sent out a mailing to all of the residents regarding an upcoming public meeting. That meant members and non-members to come to the Presbyterian Church on January twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. At that time, we had FPL executives there, who, in fact, the gentleman who takes care of the entire, uh, underground wiring project throughout the state. Uh, we had him there. We also had, uh, through the good graces of FPNL, brought in equipment for people to view. And one of those pieces of equipment was the large switchbox and also the transformers that most of us are familiar with. Uh, what's next? Well, certainly, what we need to do at this point is to determine if our property owners within the community want to pursue this. And this would be done through a straw ballot. This information would be, uh, passed on to FPNL, who would do an engineering study. And that engineering study would bring back to the table the information that we need to detail, locations of equipment, costs, and, uh, each property owner would be paying for it. The cost of that is eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Based on our divisor numbers, it comes to approximately seventy-five dollars per affected owner. So, the BSI board has agreed to fund, because their interest is so, uh, their, their interest is in this project, F, uh, BSIA will fund the stationary printing and postage expenses for the straw vote. If the straw vote returns us favorable, a simple majority of fifty percent plus one, we will also be asking the city council to authorize formation of a special task assessment district in order to collect the seventy-five dollars from the affected property owners for the required engineering study. We, uh, I'll mention that fifty percent plus one. This committee is very, uh, realistic. However, for this initial study of the seventy-five dollars, we're basing that fifty percent plus one on the fact that the sales tax was, uh, moved on a fifty percent plus one. Also, the cost is small, and the benefit to those people who want to see their community improved should have an opportunity to get a vote, uh, to move forward on that. We put this, uh, picture up. It's, it's very horrific. However, it does show that we have thirteen thousand, two hundred volts going through those wires. While this here may appear to be an isolated incident, it's not. Birds of prey do bring their catch up to these wires where they, where they perch. So, we've had other incidents of this matter with birds of prey. Uh, this also illustrates the amount of power that would come down to earth should those wires come down. In closing, I, I would just like to make a, a comment. When my son, uh, my late son was ten years old, he said something to me, which I've used in various speeches around the country. He said, Dad, in this life, if you're standing still, you're going backwards. So, to that, I say, thank you, and I hope you give consideration to this worthy project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, basically, uh, the decision today is if we wanna go through with the straw poll was, and what the, what the, um, parameters of the straw poll would be. And then, based on that, that's when, uh, the determination would have to be made to go ahead with the seventy-five dollar assessment on the next year's tax bill. So, questions?
Question.
Tom?
The fifty percent plus one, is that of the properties that received, um, a ballot, or those that responded?
Those that responded.
Those that responded.
That's.
We're going to have a return, a mailing in there.
And that's how, actually, um, local option, sales tax, it's, all registered voters are able to vote, but not all do, so that, you know, it's, the committee has taken a similar approach.
My question would be, though, what is a acceptable response rate? I mean, if we only get half back and then we get half of that half, you're really kind of diluting it down. I just, I, I would like to know what kind of response rate we feel is acceptable.
What type of response rate have you gotten so far?
Well, as you can see from the quotations, with the email, we got back some eighty-seven percent on that.
Okay.
It's BSIA members.
Shh, not, not from the audience, thank you.
That was, that was from BSIA members, of course, because that's the only, uh, individuals that had the e, the addresses.
But we did, um, the committee did send out the invitations to the Burnstour Presbyterian Church meeting.
Yes.
To the entire population. And there was, um, significant.
Yeah.
Attendance at that meeting.
Yeah, it was upwards of three hundred at that particular meeting.
You know, it's unfortunate, you can't control how many people are going to respond. And, in other situations, I've had people say to me, well, I didn't get that. Well, you did, because I know that these, you know, it was mailed out. So, I don't know, it's, that's not into the control of the committee.
No, it's, and it's one per service, so it's one vote per service.
Correct. One vote per service.
I mean, I guess we can talk about that if we're gonna move forward. I don't see any harm in doing the straw poll. I really don't.
And seventy-five dollars is a nominal amount of money.
We're not even there yet.
Right.
Honestly, so.
So, it will be mailed out to everyone?
The twelve hundred service unit owners.
Correct.
Name that's on the, the city property owner? Or the name that's on the FPL bill?
Well, these are property owners.
Okay.
These would be property owners.
The property owners.
Right. Those who do not currently have, uh, the underground, certified underground utility at the street.
The two streets that they paid for that.
Those will not be included.
Initially, when they moved in there.
Nor would.
They will not be included.
Nor would any of the surrounding or perimeter properties either.
Right. Right, so that's, and I know, just to answer, respond to the residents' concern, the committee is looking at the smaller size transformers, so that they would not have to use the big transformers that look like the size of a panel truck?
Correct. Let me, let me just elaborate on that a minute. It's a, it's a product unknown as a Vista. You have the larger switchbox, which would be the ordinary one. The Vista box does carry an extra cost, but it's this committee's recommendation that that's the only one we'd be interested in. And to give you somewhat of an illustration, comes up about waist-high. It has a footprint similar, not identical, but similar to the larger box. But, FPNL does allow landscaping, and we can do a variety of landscaping around a lower box like that.
And shouldn't there be some of those on the, close by the streets that already have the undergrounding, the switchboxes?
Some of the closest that we know are down in Naples, right at this particular time.
Okay. Gary?
Is there a box wherever there was a pole, or does it?
No, 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 no.
More than a pole?
Right, right. You'll have a transformer, I believe it's every six homes, but you're used to seeing those as the low ones. Those are every six homes, I believe. And then, Mr. Lear, who was the head guy, as I mentioned to you, he wrote through our community on January the twelfth, and he felt that, in his observations, we'd only need about eleven of them. And of course, they would be on your main trunk lines coming in. Your off the side streets and so on wouldn't be effective, but it's the main lines coming in here.
And then those would be landscaped.
That's the way, yes. That's the, what our plans would be, is to be creative in our landscaping around those.
That's all, that's all future.
Yes. Let's not put the cart before the horse and get into the details, so we, we don't want to get that far ahead of ourselves. So are we okay with the straw poll?
Yes.
The city managing?
Do I need to make a motion for that, or we, do we?
Sure.
I'll take a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve the permitting the, BSI to conduct the straw poll, or the city to participate with Burnstour Isles Association to conduct the straw poll.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have discussion regarding criteria for limited home occupations at the local and the local business tax receipt.
Good afternoon, for the record, T. Tub Zoning Official. This is pretty straightforward. When the people with the limited home occupations were advised that they did need to obtain a local business tax, we found that a lot of the businesses that were being operated were by a tenant and not the property owner. The provisions state that it has to be the resident owner only, it's not a slash between them, it's not either or. So, city clerk had mentioned that perhaps we could just get a letter of approval from the property owner that they did not object to their tenant running whatever the business is, provided it met the criteria. Minor amendment in this section of the code would take care of that, and then we can, we've got four, I believe Karen said, three or four that are kind of pending.
I definitely think the owner should give approval.
I do as well.
Okay. So we'll require the letter with it, but it'll be a minor amendment, we'll just bring that forward.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes.
FPL palm tree removal on Tamiami Forty-One, US Forty-One northbound, who's talking about that?
Florida Power and Light is going to require the removal of the palm trees, the Washingtonians along Forty-One. They will provide. They will be providing a, an allotment of dollars that we can use to replace the trees once the work is done. A type of a tree that won't affect the lines, the overhead lines, probably foxtails. We will be meeting with FPNL folks next Wednesday. And we will have a more definitive answer as to the amount of dollars they will be reimbursing us. Hopefully, it will be more than what is currently on your agenda. There is another option, and that is to underground the wires, which will then avoid replacement of trees because there'll only be more wires up ahead. But that's, well, you saw what the cost could be, and that's a rough estimate, five hundred thousand, it could be more. And FPNL pays twenty-five percent of those costs. So, like I said, we're gonna meet with them next week to get a more definitive answer on how much they will reimburse us for the, for the trees. We'll have to pay the differential, whatever that might be, because we want to put mature trees up.
Mature trees or palms?
Mature, well, we're talking about foxtails, because foxtails won't grow into the lines.
How, how tall is a mature foxtail? How big is it?
It gets about thirty feet, I think.
For the record, Jeanne LeBeau, Urban Design. We're looking at a minimum of fifteen feet clear trunk.
So how tall are the foxtails?
I think they get to about thirty feet, don't they?
They, they'll stay under the thirty feet, yes. They will not interfere. They were approved by FPL, they were actually suggested by them.
And how tall are the existing palms that are there right now?
At least forty right now, and they do grow to much higher than that.
And they're so hard to trim, and they look terrible sometimes.
We are trimming them four times a year.
Can we put a camera view antenna on?
Washingtonia grow to like seventy to ninety feet.
And then they're so, they're kind of an eyesore.
They look like lollipops to me.
They're not my favorite. Well, can we negotiate, we're gonna negotiate with FPL so we can get some nice-looking trees?
We're meeting them next week.
They know we care about our environment and our quality of life in our city, so.
Since, since FPL is going to probably put concrete obelisks down the, and they're bringing this up, and they would, it looks so nice to have, both sides of the road are all the same. Can't we negotiate with FPL since they're the ones who are saying this, that they would help us replace the palms on both sides of the road and get rid of all the Washingtonia and replace it with foxtails?
We can try.
Do everything, anything you want. I presume the undergrounding is off the table?
I don't know, I would love to go underground.
I don't know how we're gonna pay for it. We're already taking on like three things at this meeting, we have no money.
Like the businesses along Forty-One? Would they have an incentive for aesthetic reasons to fund some of the going underground? I'm just asking.
Facebook question?
No, we already have a Facebook question.
We're, okay, so, but it would be really south, technically south.
Yeah, we're going from Airport Road down to Charlotte.
Right.
Nah, they're not gonna.
Okay, so we will proceed, have the meeting with FPNL next week, and we will let you know how much they will be reimbursing us.
Unless you can get them to pay for seventy-five percent and we pay for twenty-five percent.
For undergrounding?
Yeah.
No, they won't do that.
Oh, come on.
There's a, there's a state tariff that they.
It's a twenty-five percent government discount, which is the same that they're, they'll be offering Burnstour Isles.
Yes.
Okay, you got your.
Okay.
Charge. City manager.
One item, and that is, I'm requesting council approval to develop a request for proposal process for the West Henry Street site, the former Public Works Utilities Campus. We would be requesting proposals from folks interested in developing the site, not interested in buying the land and sitting on it. It's, we want a proposal for purchase and development, and the proposals would be on a per acre basis, so that when we finally determine what the actual amount Charlotte County needs for the Ponte Gorda Library, whether it's, currently they have six acres, if they need five acres, and if the proposer wants that additional acre, you would pay a per acre price for that. I'd like to get that out on the street as soon as possible. We have interest, and hopefully that interest will develop into a development.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for it. We can always say no if we don't like what they're proposing.
That's exactly right.
It's a feel, feel the market, Tom.
I would just like to make sure we exclude pickleball development on that site.
You're gonna put the bird park, the bird park, bird park pickleball, we could put it all right there, right?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good time to test the waters. If you don't like it, we don't like it.
Yeah, exactly, it's just a proposal.
It's a good idea.
Good idea, especially if there's interest.
Okay, that's it.
City attorney is not here, so city clerk, we've dealt with your first item.
Under boards and committees, nominations, we have an unexpired term on the general employees pension board. We have one applicant for nomination. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, you may do so.
Nominate and appoint.
I'll need a motion.
I'd make a motion to nominate and appoint.
Second.
We have a motion to nominate and appoint Ms. McGelfrey? McGelfrey? She made it through this whole meeting, so we better, we better all say aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, and also, under nominations, we have a three-year term for an alternate on the code enforcement board, and we have, I believe, two applicants for that, I'm sorry.
Nominate all.
Thank you. Okay, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Policy and legislation, I just have announcements. I missed opening day at one oh five today. That's okay, I'll get over it. Friday night, Dancing with the Charlotte Stars, we have our interim chief, Louis, and we are Tommy's Bobbies, and we will be there in force and come out and see him do his thing. I haven't checked his status lately on the website.
We were in the lead yesterday, but just by a little much.
But we're, we're planning to do some more fundraising there Friday night, it'll be a great time. So, a lot going on. This last weekend, we were, had a fun time painting a house on Berlin Street. We, they actually put us in the county, which was kind of funny. There were all these houses in the city, and they put us on the county side, so, but it was great. And, and it, I don't know if you know Bruce Tompkins, who does all the videos for Team and Jammers and all that? He did a really nice video for the Paint Your Heart Out. In the lady's house, that Mrs. Parker's house that we painted, she's lived there since nineteen fifty-six. Which I thought was really interesting. And she was very appreciative. It was fun. It was fun. So those are good times. There's a lot going on, so get out there and enjoy the weather and the activities. That's it. Councilmember comments, Kim?
Yeah, that was a great video, by the way, and don't forget about Funk Fest.
Oh, yeah.
This weekend, too, we'll be at Dancing with the Stars Friday, but Funk Fest will be, Here Comes the Mummies.
Tom?
Howard, where do we stand on the, the ordinance that was purportedly going through the county on the South County overlay?
Nowhere.
Nowhere. Can, can I suggest that we request a meeting with the county commissioners for the purposes of discussing the South County?